Good evening. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of September 21st, 2021. Take a motion to open the meeting. Moved by Ellen. Second by Trista. All in favor? Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. All right, as always, I'd like to thank EB Cam for their time and effort in making sure that our meetings are televised for the general public. Thank you EB Cam. And first up on our agenda tonight is a report from the East Bridgewater High School Student Advisory Council member. Ms. Schrader, how are you?
Good, how are you? All right, so all I have today is update on our homecoming week. We have selected a theme and it is board games. It will be October 12th to 16th. Tuesday will be superhero day. Wednesday we'll have a club breakfast in place of our previously freshman dinner. So grades seven through 12 can all attend and learn about all the clubs that we have to offer at the high school. Thursday will be Viking pride. We'll have the pep, that will be the day of the pep rally, powder puff, and then the football homecoming game. And then Friday, the field hockey game is happening that night. And in honor of that, we're having a breast cancer awareness to support them. And everyone will be wearing pink. Saturday is the homecoming dance. And also the hallways at school are going to be decorated in board game theme by all the clubs.
Also Lucy and I had a meeting yesterday because we want us to be, we want the district to be K through 12. Lucy is going to speak to Mr. Gentile and Mrs. Byrne this evening prior to them, to leaving. We thought we would kind of catch them before the meeting started. But to delegate either an email one week and then, or one meeting and then another meeting, have her go down and sit with Mr. Gentile or sit with Mrs. Byrne and then be able to see what's going on in the schools. We found out she doesn't really have a lot of unassigned time. She has a ceramics class that she might be able to move around a little bit. And Mr. Clements has said that she could, we could leave and go down to the schools at a particular time in the day and meet up with Mr. Gentile. And then maybe he could have a couple of students come up and meet once, once we get going. But it's, I think we need also to hear from the other schools, not just the junior, senior high school. I mean, it's important up here, but the other schools are important to us as well. And I think hearing a student's voice and knowing what's happening on in the schools is very important.
Yeah.
Thanks Lucy.
Well, while it's your time, I was noticing recently that a lot of local school districts, I shouldn't say a lot, several local school districts were doing fall proms this year. So I don't know if that's a more, I mean, are we doing that?
No, we did our prom.
Yeah, that's probably because they didn't have one.
So those are not for the current seniors, those are for last year's kids that didn't get them. I get it. Okay. Disregard the question. Well, they're having one, they did, I don't know what they're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Lucy.
You're welcome.
Superintendent's corner.
So I'll go quick through here. I don't think we, I mean, the COVID-19 update, not too much. We've been very, I don't, I can't say enough about the students, the teachers, everyone doing what we're asking them to do. To stay in the game, to be part of, to be part of the solution, not be part of the problem. The kids are doing a great job. We, yeah, you want to come up? Yeah. Because I know, I know you got to get that information out. No chairs tonight.
So new this week, I just sent out the consent to all of the families in the district regarding the testing methods that Desi has approved for this year. There are three methods, symptomatic test and stay, and then the routine COVID safety checks. The reason it took us, me so long to get them out is because there's been some conversation between a lot of the districts and the lab, because the lab is only providing a consent for all three. So it's all or nothing. And I know that in conversations that I've had with families, some families are not interested in the routine COVID safety checks or, or one or the other. So I created an opt-out form. So if they give me consent for all three and then they fill out the EBPS opt-out form, then they can say, but not this one really, not this one. So we're going to follow that with the nurses before we do any testing. So with that said, the current numbers in the school from August, at the central school, we have 36 students that were tracked, that have been tracked. Nine of them have been positive, resulting in 15 identified close contacts that have participated in the test and stay program. So those are 15 students that are not quarantining, that are able to stay in school. At the Mitchell School, we've tracked 56 students. Seven have been positive, one was prior to even school starting. So these are numbers right from like the middle of August when people started calling me. Thirty-one have participated in test and stay. And at the junior, senior high school, we have been tracking 27 students since that time. Four are positives, three of them prior to school even starting. So we still had no positives as a result of in-school contact. Most of the positives have come in or have been in quarantine because a parent might be positive and then they ultimately became positive. So we have not had too much in-school tracking either. The result of our vaccination survey for the students is an overall response rate of 25%. I think we were looking for higher numbers, but 25% of the parents have responded on behalf of their students with an overall 20% vaccination rate.
Can you, just so I understand, only 25% have responded to the actual survey just generally?
Yes.
So that's really low participation.
Yeah, it is 237 people or on behalf of 237 students out of a total of 944 students.
So if everyone filled it out, that projects out at an 80% rate. It's just that we haven't got the participation.
Right.
And that went out last week, was it?
No, it went out a couple of weeks ago.
A couple of weeks ago, okay. We'll send it again.
We'll do it. We reminded everybody about the S3 survey. We can remind everybody again. The vaccination ban is here, we're going to continue to, you know, we continue to push it.
That's pretty much it, unless you have any questions.
So two, two things I just wanted to mention real quick. And I'm not, I know you know this, I'm just thinking for those watching, just for their information. I don't know how this district feels. I know I'm particularly frustrated with the test to stay program because I don't think it was well advertised at the beginning. That would only be for close contacts in school.
Yes.
You know, I think it was sold as a program that would keep the schools open. And, you know, really out of the overall number of kids that are quarantining, how many of them are close contacts from school versus life? So I don't, I don't know if the state's giving any thought to adjusting that because I think that would go a long way towards getting kids in the building as the year goes on. But I mean, I've already talked to a couple of parents who were like, great, this is now that we're doing this, my kid's not going to miss days anymore. I said, no, no, only if they're a close contact from the kids sitting next to them, is that the case? And since they're all wearing masks and that you're not a close contact if you're wearing a mask, we're really not talking about very many kids being eligible for the test to stay program.
And I could have missed something, but I totally agree with you. That was my perception at the beginning.
Right.
That I had had conversation with the nurses concerned about the volume that that would entail. And then I had a webinar with Desi and they, because they are supporting, they are funding all of these tests across the Commonwealth. And they said that because the school is a very controlled environment and it's because the transmission is not extensive, that they are recommending and supporting only close contacts in school.
Is there a discussion that that may expand as the year goes on? Because as we get into the winter months, I mean, in school, close contacts are going to be 1% of the overall close contacts.
That assumes that everybody keeps their mask.
Right, right.
I mean, once, if the masks go away, then that opens up a whole can of worms as far as how do we define close contacts? And do we even have the resources to test all those close contacts in the event of positive cases?
Right.
We can worry about that later.
And so I think as a district, it would be my recommendation for us to broaden that as long as we have that okay from Desi. But we would have to get the full nursing staff up to capacity as well as the lab that Desi is supporting has offered to provide help. So I'm on that list somewhere and I sent another email today, like my nurses are drowning, like you got to help me out. Like they, they can't administer meds and take care of sick kids while they, you know, at the Mitchell School, I think that there was 25 kids this week that were cycling through.
But test to stay is supposed to provide their own staff, correct?
They're supposed to.
Well, you have to, you ask the lab for that help and right now the lab is just.
Right, they're not, right. Ideally, they provide the staff to do it.
I was on a call today with several superintendents. One superintendent said, we waited and waited and no one showed up. Again, and I'm not, because we, again, we're building an airplane as we're flying it. The Urbans, and this takes nothing away from the Urbans, the Urbans are going to go first. Everybody is going to Brockton, to New Bedford, to Fall River, to Worcester, to Springfield. They're going first. Revere, Lynn, and Boston. Boston pretty much has their own surgical center in their school system. But they're, they're going to go first and that's where a lot of the support. That's why we went outside and got our own vaccination van and it's being supported by the CARES Act. But I think that that's what's going to happen as well. I think they'll, we'll start to see outsourcing, if there is any left outsourcing to bring people in to help support this. And that's why we're doing two nurses in each building and trying to hire as many as we can and as quick as we can.
And these just went out today, right, these postings?
No.
For the nurses? Oh, okay, I saw the date on it, so I was. Okay.
We, we did it again.
Okay.
Mr. Gentile just got through, you know, because we have to vet it and we have to make sure that we've got the right. So we just got another one. Mr. Clements hired somebody the other day, that person is in. Mr. Gentile hired today, that person will be in by Monday.
Okay, so we're, we're, oh, good, okay. We're getting applications because there's a lot of.
Well, we're hoping today. We've got, I think, two applications on the, on the end right now. School nurses are hard to come by. Dr. Williams did have a meeting with the nurses. She relayed the message back that we need more. We're trying to get two per building and trying to get them here. We did have a resignation from one of the high school nurses, or both high school nurses. One is going back to family in North Carolina and due to personal reasons. And then, so we, we hired for that and then we've got another hire. So we're on it and it's, if anybody knows of a nurse that is looking for a, a public school district position, please let us know. And we're always looking for, we would like a sub nurse as well. Someone that we can call on a Wednesday, knowing that we are not going to have both nurses in the building. If anybody would just like to be on a call, sub list, we will take a sub nurse. Someone who's retired, someone who, you know, wants, you know, once a week, we would certainly entertain that.
I didn't say that to derail you, I just, I think it's important for people to realize that, you know, test to stay was kind of sold as this keep the schools open program and it's really not.
Well, I think it was that big of an idea.
Right.
And then when they came to the actual implementation of it, they backed right up and are starting slower, so.
So this is just a curiosity question. So now kids, they're back in school or some kids are starting to get sick. So are they, if a kid, if a child is sick in school, then they just stay in class, do they get tested, like?
So that's one of the methods is the symptomatic testing, that any kid that, you know, obviously if your kid is not feeling well at home, they should stay home just like any other sickness. But if they're in school and become sick, they can go to the nurse and that we will test them for COVID if we have this consent. So then if the symptoms are mild, the student can go back to the classroom. If the symptoms are not mild, we can send them home to the parent at least saying that we have tested them for COVID and that's.
And you can test them without a close contact also?
As a symptomatic student, yes. We have to remember it, just, I want to put this out here because I do think that COVID is COVID. COVID is going to be here from now to the end of time, just like influenza. We deal with it every year in the school district. We're still dealing with it. Kids are going to get sick, but we're also seeing right now, Kate's going to see it probably before anybody in the next two weeks. Every one of those little kindergartners, preschoolers, first grader, second grader are going to get that fall cold. And then we'll see it and then, and then we'll see it at the Mitchell School as it, as it works its way up here. And Mr. Clements has his first dancer, first homecoming thing, event, we will see. It'll go right through this district. There's also allergies. We tested some kids that were sneezing and coughing and then the parent causes, it's allergies. So just want to, I know that people are, and I'm not, please know that we're doing everything we possibly can to mitigate and doing everything that we can in the classroom. I don't want though to say, well, if, if the students, when you just said, kids are coming back to school being sick, please don't, that's not happening. If a student comes into our buildings and they are sick, we attend to them. If a teacher sees that a child is sick, they send them immediately to the nurse's office and they are tested and then they are called to go home. If a child is sick, we tell all of the principals, I think we have a meeting this week, Thursday with the high school. I know that Mr. Gentile said it, I think they're having, you're coming up on, and Mrs. Byrne has said it. If your child is sick, please keep them home. We say that regardless, stay home. When I first started teaching, my principal said, unless you can't even walk, you better be here. We don't say that anymore. We say, stay in bed, get better, we'll see you in a few days or the next morning. So I just, I don't want to start that panic and I don't want people to think, well, if you're sick, we come back and they'll take you and you can sit in the nurse's office. That is not what we do. That is absolutely not what we do. I just, I, there are some people, like the spectrum, like you and I, it's like, there's people that are really hyper about it. There's some people that are very lax about it. There's some people in the middle. We go, Karen goes from both sides, the principals go both, both ways every day. And I just don't want to scare people that we do that because we do not.
And Karen, just a question about the testing. I know the parents have to give consent and they can opt out. But I have had a couple of parents ask, and you know, just for purposes of clarification, if a parent does not give consent for any of the testing, their child obviously would not be tested without consent, whether it's for symptomatic or what have you. So what would be the protocol? So, what would be the protocol if a parent hasn't given consent for any type of testing?
So, there's so many.
There's layers.
No, I know.
So, many different scenarios. We went back and forth on this a little bit today, Dr. Williams and I. So, if a parent does not give consent, their child will not be tested. Like, we cannot test without the consent. So, the first thing we're going to do is look at the lab consents to see what have come in and then we'll compare it to the EBPS opt-out that I made. So, my recommendation is if a teach, if an individual, a parent is a hard no, they can either not fill out any forms. And if their child comes down to the nurse symptomatic, we're going to call them and we're going to say, they're symptomatic, can we do the test and stay? No, I don't, I don't agree to any testing. Okay, then you're going to have to come and pick them up. They need to leave the buil- they need to leave the building. Or if they're a close contact, no, you cannot test and stay. So, then come and pick them up and they'll stay home and quarantine. Or they can just go directly to the opt-out form and put their, fill it out that they don't want any of the tests. That will alleviate some of the, it won't alleviate the phone call because we still have to call and say, your kid is sick, come get them. But we don't have to constantly go through the whole, do you want to test or not test? That's the only workaround that I could make up.
I just think it's, it's important for parents to know because some have asked, you know, how.
So, the whole opt-out form was a whole workaround, the whole lab thing because we couldn't figure out how to, I was afraid that people would say no to everything instead of yes to something, so.
So, just to follow up, to be clear, if you want to opt out of any combination of testing, you s- but you want to opt into something, you still need to fill out the lab form?
Fill out the lab consent.
Okay.
And then designate on the op, the East Bridgewater opt-out. I don't want one and two, or I don't want two and three.
Okay.
If you don't want any of them, don't sign the lab consent. Just fill out the opt-out form so that we're aware that you made that choice.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
And that, that really has just come up in the day that it's been out?
Yeah.
So, that really wasn't part of the explanation?
Oh, yeah, no.
For a student that's sent home to quarantine without being tested, what's the protocol for them to come back to the school at that point?
So, the protocol is they can test between day five and seven and return on day eight. And last spring, we did do for in-school contacts, that testing on day eight to allow them to, to come into the building.
So, they do have to get tested at some point to come back?
Or they wait ten days.
Or if they choose not to test, they have to be asymptomatic for the ten days and they can return on day eleven. So, that test between five and seven just shortens that quarantine, but they still have to quarantine.
And that many missing days of school, how will that affect them attendance-wise for the school year in terms of going to the next grade? Because that's been my concern when they have to leave school for a number of days. If it happens once or twice in the year, that's a lot of school days missed.
So, hopefully they would fall under the test and stay category if they're a close contact. If it's an outside contact, then I, I think the way we stand right now, that those absences are absences because they're not present in school. I had a conversation with a parent earlier today and I said that in the event that their child was quarantined multiple times, whether it was outside or inside, that if push came to shove and they were making up their work and that they had to meet with the principal about an attendance issue, that I would certainly advocate to that principal that these were certain quarantine days. Like, that is not information that I'm allowed to share ahead of time, but if the parent gave me permission for that purpose, then I could do that. So, I, I have to say that there's no specific rule.
Yeah, it sounds like it's.
No clear ruling on that right now because we don't know what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you, Karen.
You good?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
God bless this year.
Thanks, Karen. So, the ESER three, uh, grant discussion, I think we, we started the discussion or the stakeholder, we had a stakeholder meeting prior to this meeting. We gave you some materials to look at. We, you know, we can always take questions on that. We, we've done what we needed to do to put in for the grant. We have asked for the grant because we've done all the due diligence that DESI wanted to do. If there's something that you see in there that we're not hitting upon, please, um, talk to us. Um, I'll continue to bring it to you. We'll continue to hone in on this. John, right now, is in the middle of the, or not in the middle, he's pretty much at the end of his, end of the year report audit. And when he gets done with that, then we'll start with next year's budget and then we'll start talking about negotiations.
Wish I was near the end.
He, he told me three times, he was almost at the end today because he's way ahead.
He didn't mean the budget. He did not mean the budget. He meant he's at the end.
So, but if there's any questions on that, if there's something that we didn't hit on, that you think we should hit on, let me know. I do think that we, um, have the pulse of the community with the survey, with our strategic plan. I do think that we continue to hit on the mark. Um, I do think the principal, I don't think, I know that the principals certainly have the pulse on their buildings and know what they're, what we're looking for. The staff vaccination update. So, just want to let you know, we, about seventy-seven percent of our staff, that teachers, custodial, lunch, teacher assistant, uh, instructional assistants, everyone that deals with our students, um, is sending this in. I did send a letter, a confidential letter. I don't know who it was sent to because I did not see the names, uh, but I did send a confidential letter out to any of the, any, uh, person who works for the District of East Bridgewater, that they must, uh, let me know of their vaccination at this time. Uh, they have till Friday if I don't get it and then we'll move forward. But we're at seventy-seven percent staff-wise. Now, I didn't want to give a breakdown at this time because I don't have all of them in and it wouldn't be fair. So, I'm going to give, I gave everybody a chance today. They all went out, um, last night in the mail or this morning in the, in our, in our office mail. We've gotten a lot in today. I am sure that we'll get every, one of them back and then I will let, let you know what it looks like for teachers, what it looks like for ISAs, what it looks like for, um, certified personnel, non-certified personnel, um, those people who, those who work in our cafeteria, those who work, um, with our students that come in and out of the building. We also have a, we also have North River Collaborative who works in our building. Jay Fallon will take, is taking care of them. So, we are, we're working with a, you know, anybody who comes in and out of this building, comes in and out of, uh, Central and Mitchell Schools. So, that's really the, uh, the updated information on that. I can tell you this, that the MTA, uh, Massachusetts Teacher Association, they want their teachers vaccinated. We want our teachers vaccinated, so that's good to know. I know that the AFT, the MTA, um, and the, uh, what's the other one? AFT, MTA, NEA, and the NEA, all are pushing for vaccinations, for certified personnel.
So, I, I truly don't know the answer to this. I'm not baiting you. Department of Labor about two weeks ago put out a directive that employers over a certain number of employees have to enforce a mandate. How, how does that impact us? Is there?
At this time, that's why we sent that out today.
Yeah.
And then we'll talk to, so what we thought we would do is try to get as, as, um, much momentum we can. I sent them a letter directly from the superintendent's office.
Okay.
I think at that point, um, if, if, um, they weren't, then, uh, then I would recommend that we, you would, or I would call Nick Dominello. We'd move. I think at this time, that education, um, and the Department of Ed is trying not to go in that direction.
Gotcha.
I do know that there are, um, places, businesses in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and Connecticut, who have told people, if I, if you don't have your vaccination, you will lose your job by this date. I actually, um, spoke to somebody who works for State Agency in Rhode Island, um, and they said that they sent out like fifty letters and they, some people had to get, got their first shot. They get a percentage of their pay taken every day until that second shot comes in. So, because there was, you had so long to get it, you chose not to get it and now they're going to be.
But they're also facing OSHA fines of tens of thousands of dollars if they don't enforce it too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and right now DESI has not given us any, any indication that they're going to push for that. And I think that that's the, I, I, knowing how, knowing the MTA, the, and, uh, AFT, not so much the NEA, but knowing those organizations, um, they know that that's, that's part of that play, which we don't want to get into. And so, I.
Right.
I don't see a lot of people not, I, I really don't. Our teachers, I really don't see it, um, with our teachers. I really, I, I feel very confident in, in the teachers, very confident in the instructional support assistants, very confident in them, uh, that they have received. Barbara, and Barbara has given me some of that information, said, be very confident in your teacher, people that are in the, the rooms, so.
Liz, one other thing I just wanted to bring up. I had a, I don't know where else on the agenda it would be brought up, but since we're talking about COVID and vaccinations and so on and so forth, had a couple of committee members reach out to me over the last month or so to just discuss the October first deadline that's kind of looming in front of us. And, and, you know, I don't think we need to, you know, get into any kind of debate about it tonight, but just worthy to note that, you know, so far DESI has not budged off their October first deadline. And, you know, we're going to have to make a decision as a committee with how we handle that going forward. But as of right now, we still have a mask mandate policy in effect. So, even if we get to October first and we're at eighty percent, until we debate or make movement on it, we're, we're masked. And if we decide, I mean, I don't know if, like I said, if, if we find out we're close to that eighty percent, it's something we can discuss how we're going to handle. But, you know, I just want to throw that out there because I don't want, there are those in the public that believe that as soon as we get to October first.
Yeah.
Off we go.
So, I, I actually last, uh, Friday, uh, received, um, from DESI, um, on a Friday at three o'clock. This is, this is how we're working right now and Karen, Karen will tell you, it's go, and we are flying a jet at about, my, three thousand. At about three o'clock in the afternoon, received a email from DESI asking, on October first, if you are at eighty percent, where is your school committee? What are your thoughts? Are you going no? Are you going yes? Do you have a mask policy in place, yes or no? On October first, if you are eighty percent, is your school committee ready to go yes or no? And, um, are you ready to follow that? Are you willing to break from DESI or to stay with the school committee? So, I think, I don't think we're the only school district that would stay masks.
I just want to recognize that we're going to have to have a discussion about it and, and figure what we're going to do. And I'm sure in the process, we're going to make some people unhappy no matter what we decide. But I just, you know, we're, we're, we're not meeting again until after October first. So, I just wanted to throw that out there for right now, that should we get to that threshold, we're currently still masked until the committee, you know, until we discuss it and figure out where, where we want to go with that, so.
That's fine.
What, so, if we don't reach eighty percent, what happens then? Do we, it's, so, that, because that, so that's how I read it and I wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly, that unless you reach eighty percent, you stay masked? Until DESI decides to set a new rule? Is that how it is or?
Pretty much.
Well, right now, we're not even close to being to eighty percent with the kids because I, I called.
Regardless, I'm just pointing that out, that right now, i- if we were to reach that eighty percent element before our next meeting, that, you know, that, I, I just wanted to point out what the status quo is until we consider and, and vote on it.
And, and all I can say is, if, we will, we will, we'll reach eighty percent tomorrow after, when, I will tell you that, for staff. I will tell you that. I will tell you when Barbara comes in and goes through that, we'll be at eighty percent. I am absolutely positive that we will. If you were to say to the kids tomorrow, Clarence, you know, we want, if you're vaccinated, let's get your kids vaccinated for seven, seven through twelve, we might see a boost and, and have kids get vaccinated. That doesn't mean you have to take the masks off.
Right.
We also have asked for surveys and out of nine hundred students here at the seven through twelve, we got two hundred ninety back. I sent a survey on ESER funds and got five ninety-eight back. To me, that's like, wow, like, I, I, we can't even believe it. Usually we'd get, it'd be the opposite. So, to me, whether we stay masked, whether we don't stay masked, that's up to you. But I would say, I don't want to say to the kids, get vaccinated and we'll let, and then we're going to go no masks.
Right.
But I don't want, I don't want us to dangle, and I, and I've said this from the beginning, don't tell, and I said this to, I said this to, um, DESI, I, I, you know, there's some of us that will speak up and I have said this. Don't dangle that fruit out in front of these kids and these families and then take it back. If we said it and say, listen, we're going to wear a mask until our community feels comfortable to take the mask off, that's fine. But don't tell us, hey, uh, DESI says to us, says, hey, we're going to call the shots now and, you know, don't take a bite out of the apple. And so, we never took a bite out of the apple and now, and now you say, well, you still can't take your mask off. Well, you, you told us one thing and not the other. So, um.
Which is why I think we've been very careful to not make any promises or statements about.
Right, I just don't want us to say that to kids and I don't want DESI to say that and to set them up. They oversee, the school district, the school committee oversees, but you also have that upper hand as a school committee setting policy.
Right.
So.
Just wanted to make sure we all are on the same page.
Yeah, but I, I just want people to know that, you know, I want to push the kids to get vaccinated.
Yep.
Kids should get vaccinated. There's a lot of talk about getting younger kids vaccinated. I don't know if you saw it today, it's, it's starting to come. We're starting to see Pfizer and, and the other, um, but I think, I do think that kids here at the, uh, at the junior, senior high school need to get vaccinated. They're out there, um, I was on a call today, there is a school district in the South Shore, they put their football team out for, for two weeks, missed three games, a scrimmage and two, two games. It can happen. So, we need to be vigilant for our own school and other schools need to be vigilant when we put our kids out there. I want our kids to be safe. But I also know that we need to get an immune system as well, so we got to eat a little dirt once in a while, so. But I agree with you, Tim. I'm, you know.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see it either.
Maybe it'll be agenda item at the next meeting, perhaps the one after that, we'll figure out where we're at.
I would say that between the meetings that Dr. Williams have had, I have had and Karen have, have had online with other districts and the COVID officers, I don't see that happening on October first. I wouldn't say that we wouldn't have it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just the principals.
All right. What do we want to do?
I'll start with Kate. Kate, if you want my seat.
Get your chair up, Kate.
Sure.
Yeah.
Kate, you can sit in my seat. Want to sit in my seat? Well, I was going to say, then everybody at home can see you.
Not the parents. Younger kids, yeah.
Okay, go. You have five minutes. You have five minutes.
Well, first of all, good evening. Nice to see you everyone. This is the first time I have, um, been to school, really, this school year, so it's great to see everyone. You're welcome.
Thanks.
I want to start off by making sure that I said some thank you to so many important people that you've probably heard about, the superintendent of a couple of meetings. The central school had an extensive summer project on our roof, um, so I wanted to thank, probably, facilities department for just staying on top of that project. The workmanship is phenomenal. I don't miss quite a chance to get up and post and even just look at the shingles and all the sizing that was done. They've done a really excellent job. We look forward to that job being completed by October first. Not quite done yet. We still have some windows that need to be replaced that we know they're having a hard time locating.
Actually getting them from Michigan to us. But hopefully by October first, um, we should have those windows in place and then we can say that that project officially will be done with. I'd also like to thank. Should I move something?
Five minutes are up.
I didn't want to make that worse. Thank you very much. Hopefully that's easier on your ears. I'd also like to send a quick thank you also to my custodial staff and my administrative assistants that worked throughout the summer under those, um, conditions, um, for just keeping the building up and running and getting us up and ready for the start of the school year, which of course for us was a big deal on our open house, which was on August three first, which again was well attended. So, thank you to the community for coming out. It was wonderful to have people back in our building. We hadn't had people in our building. Families were not allowed in since March conferences of two thousand and twenty, so it had been a long time overdue. They were very.
They were very well attended, and it was a great night, so some of you may have still attended, I think many of you are, are beyond us at this point in time. Also excited to share with you, and you've probably seen some communication already about new staff, we have a brand new music teacher this year, Miss Brandon Lane, she is an East Bridgewater graduate, and she's doing a wonderful job taking over our general music classes, so she'll be teaching pre-K.
Didn't meet this place anybody. But she'll be teaching music for preschoolers up to grade two, and so we're happy to have Ms. Lane on board. In addition, with grant-funded positions this year, we have the additional adjustment counselor, we were able to bring on Mrs. Laura Eddy, she actually filled in last year as a long-term adjustment counselor for a period of time, we were able to bring her back with this grant funding, and we're thrilled to have her. I did want to also mention, when I talked about that additional, that third adjustment counselor for us at Central School, I know Mrs. Clancy had a few questions about it, we also do have two social worker interns this year, one that Mr. Phelan helped us get through North River Collaborative, and we also have a student from BSU. So in addition to our three adjustment counselors, we will also have two social worker interns, which is a great opportunity for them and for us. In addition, with that grant funding, we have an additional classroom teacher. This year, that classroom teacher is in a grade one position, able to help us, one, make a really database decision based on what we were seeing for students as far as their learning, but also looking at our enrollment and our class sizes. So we were happy to welcome Ms. Kaitlyn Kelly to grade one, and also with that grant funding, taking a veteran teacher, a math specialist who's been teaching kindergarten for the last couple of years, now being able to be a math teacher for K to 2, to offer math intervention. Really excited to have Ms. Casey Sims in that role. For the last couple of weeks, she's been able to get into all classrooms, she's been able to help out with routines, as well as really get to know the learning styles of students and the teaching practices of teachers. So we're really happy to have that on board. I'm not sure what my countdown is, first grade parent lunch, we have that every year, except last year, so we're thrilled to be able to have that return, and we had two sessions last week, we'll have two more this week, and that's where first graders get to invite a special guest or two to come and have lunch at Central School. So thank you to Mrs. Vaughn and the kitchen staff and the teachers for helping plan that event, and that we're able to once again bring that back to school. Last Friday, we had our summer reading celebration, when we focused on our theme of overcoming adversity. That was the first time the district had this whole wide, district-wide celebration. I'd like to say that students had a great opportunity to share what they learned, and they also had opportunity to participate in team-building activities, as well as learn about some more inspirational people who have overcome adversity over the course of their life, and that was last Friday. I'll give you a little taste of what's coming up, our one central book for the first term is going to be Amy Wu and the Patchwork Dragon by Kat Zhang, that will be later in October, around October 25th, but we look forward to sharing more information with you about that choice, as we continue to focus around diversity, equity, inclusion, and our social emotional learning with that book. Our iReady diagnostic window for us at Central School, we're testing both in math and reading, that window opened up this week, and will continue up until October 8th, where we get our baseline data for students. That information, in conjunction with some of our other beginning of the year assessments, will be used to help us identify those students that need additional interventions, so whether that be reading support and/or math support, that's where our tier two and tier three interventions will start coming into play once we analyze that data. We're looking forward to our Wonders Training, which is coming up on Friday, the half day, so teachers are really excited about our new reading program, and look forward to learning more about it, and all of the wonderful resources that come with it, so Friday afternoon, they anticipate learning a lot.
Good job, Kate.
You don't have any school committee children this year, do you?
Pardon?
You don't have any school committee children this year, do you?
I don't, that's what I was looking around, and I was like, I think they're all past me, I think they're all.
You have another McLaughlin coming next year.
Well.
You're going to need more staff. She's something, but enjoy your year off.
We look forward to welcoming you here, thank you.
Sure you will. I know. I know what I'm saying.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. The opening of school at Mitchell has been, has been great, I think one of the standouts has just been a sense of normalcy with certain things and in certain areas of the building. Certainly seeing kids in the cafeteria, having opportunities for socialization in there, being able to bring kids together for opening of school assemblies with myself and Mrs. Dupre have been great, welcome opportunities to get the kids together in ways that we haven't been able to in quite a while. Definitely want to thank and send a shout out to our custodial staff and to my administrative assistants, working tirelessly over the summer to prepare us, school looked great, to open up, and, and we were well-prepared for the students and staff to arrive. Staff's done an amazing job, both in preparation for the students to come in, and upon receiving them, you know, in the opening weeks of school, staff has worked really hard and understand that, you know, this year is a unique one, where we really need to understand where our students are at right now, and be able to meet them in that place, and then, and bring them forward from there. To that end, we've administered our fall administration of the iReady diagnostics, with the exception of a handful of students who are getting as, as we need to, and have started to analyze that information. As we've seen, I think across the state, we're seeing math as a real area where students are showing deficiencies, and I was speaking with our new math specialist today about that, and, and one of the things that I feel is, we, we encounter reading all of the time, even when kids are out of school, you know, whether it's reading a street sign or something that's on the television, so fortunately, I think we haven't seen as big of a decline in, in the area of reading. With regard to math, although we encounter math every day, the type of math and the degree to which we expect students to understand it are not necessarily things they encounter on a daily basis. So we acknowledge that, we're seeing that in the, in the results from the diagnostics, as well as the initial review of our MCAS data across the state, that is true, that math appears to be the area where all districts across Massachusetts, and I'm, and I'm sure across the nation, that's the area where we really, we really need to focus. To that end, one of our new positions is a math specialist position, our math specialist is Heather Fowler-Wechter, who was a third grade teacher, very skilled in math, was formerly a math specialist at the Central School, and has really already just taken the position and run with it, both with regard to working in classrooms, as well as working with us to begin to analyze the data, and not to just analyze it, but then to make decisions as to what we can do with that information, and how we can have an impact for kids. The MCAS results, the information is fairly new, and in my personal opinion, I find that the diagnostic testing that we do with students is a lot more valuable and timely, and we can apply it in the classroom a lot more readily than MCAS information. One of the things that has always been, or has been valuable the last several years about MCAS data, is we've been able to see growth scores from students and how they've grown over time, and as a result of the MCAS not being administered in 2020, we don't have that information to be able to determine those growth rates. So by having these diagnostics that we give kids, we're really able to see not only where they're at right now, but come fall, we'll be able to see, have our interventions work to help support them growing. If they have, obviously, we're going to want to continue those things into the spring, and if not, then we need to, you know, adjust and adapt and try and have a greater impact. Similar, as Mrs. Byrne mentioned, last Friday, we had our summer reading celebration, it was awesome, it was really, it was a fun day to walk around throughout the grade levels and see the different activities that kids were working on. In third grade, students read Trouble According to Humphrey, so there was a variety of activities going on throughout the third grade. In fourth grade, the book was called Allergic, again, variety of activities, kids were able to engage in the topic in a variety of different activities in the classroom, and then our fifth and sixth graders both read Fish in a Tree, and that provided some nice opportunities, and we're hoping to build on trying to connect the fifth and sixth grade around the book and, and around the topic of overcoming adversity as we move forward. SEL, huge for the district, obviously, we've been fortunate this year to add a, an additional adjustment counselor, and in a very short period of time, have already begun to see the impact of being able to broaden our web of supporting kids in that area. We now have two adjustment counselors and two guidance counselors at Mitchell. In addition, we're going to be receiving a social work intern as well, and we've already started to, the guidance counselors have been into classrooms, starting to do guidance lessons with kids. We have the guidance counselors and the school adjustment counselors working together on a peer mentoring program that they're trying to get up and running. So there's a lot of things that we've talked about over the last couple of years that we're actually able to see come to fruition right now, and we know that, you know, for kids to be able to access the academics, which we know is, is the top priority, they need to be in, in a good mental, you know, and emotional space. So I really feel like we've broadened our ability to, to meet kids where they are with regard to those areas, and that's really exciting to see. Lastly, again, along the SEL route, we're happy this year, we are arranging to bring back Rachel's Challenge to the Mitchell School. For those of you that, that aren't familiar with Rachel's Challenge, Rachel's Challenge was born out of the Columbine shooting, Rachel Scott was the first student that was killed, and her family have created this incredible organization that's been around for quite a while now, and it's really not about Columbine, it's about kindness and compassion, and about really building within a school and a community, the capacity around that, and really trying to develop empathy within kids, and just really trying to build in the area of kindness and compassion. So we're excited to be able to bring them back, they'll be coming back to us in October, and from that, at our school, we have a kindness and compassion club that, that is built, and throughout the course of the year, will help to keep that momentum, you know, so it's not a one and done kind of an activity. So excited about some things that, that we're returning, and very happy about some of the new things that we've been able to add, and, and the impact of those things that we've already seen. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Those are two tough acts to follow, but I'll try to do my best. There's obviously been a lot going on at the junior, senior high school. If I can be so bold, I've heard that it was a relatively smooth start, and we're proud of so many things that have been going on. Our guidance department has really hit the ground running, pleased to say that students are fully scheduled, not only did they, did we start the year fully scheduled with students, but they were able to come on board under the supervision and help of Ms. Clifford, and really amend any minor irregularities to the schedule. They have, our guidance counselors have already been out and around, it's a, it's a first-world problem, sometimes when we need them, they don't pick up the phone because they're in classrooms or they're meeting with kids, which is a great, you know, great situation to, to find. They're in Viking blocks, they've been working with, I believe, junior English classes last week and this week, to just touch base with the juniors, to talk about the guidance and post-secondary planning and support and roadmapping already. In addition, we have been singing the praises across the district of our new adjustment counselor positions, we are equally as thrilled here with our adjustment counselor, she has already been a big help in supporting some of the wraparound services that Superintendent Lugo has talked about, maintaining kids. Additionally, in that same guidance realm, as we said, we've got nine students, I think, currently in dual enrollment, I want to say, so we've got nine students who, in addition to their high school class load here, are also taking courses for college credit in a, in a few different areas, so that's really special to see. We are fully staffed at this point, we, we have been fully staffed, which is great, we've had one teacher out on leave in the special ed department for FMLA, and we've got a licensed bed teacher in the long-term sub-supporting role, so we've got a continuity of service delivery there, which is excellent. I've been working closely with our instructional leadership team, the lead teachers, as I tried to give everybody the summer off, we did hit the ground running with the NIASC report that we talked about in May, we have already started. In terms of data collection, there will certainly be more to come on that front, but we have started that work in terms of figuring out where we are with the recommendations, and we still have more work to do, but I feel like where we are midway through September, we're actually in a pretty good shape with that report in terms of data collection and advanced looking at the report writing. Extracurriculars are off with a bang, Lucy did a great job today at her cross-country meet, but all the, you know, the sports are up, the sports are running, there's going to be more information coming out around homecoming week, it's going to be the week of right after Columbus Day, starting with the 12th. Lucy did a better job than I could possibly do of explaining the events that are going on there. Later on this week, we have, on Thursday, we've got a couple of events, we've got our seventh grade parent information night, which was moved back a little bit, and hearing some of the buzz, we're, we're hoping that that's a little bit more, we're hoping that the timing works out well, because it's, we're not going to just be able to speak to parents about this is what your children will go through, but rather, this is what the first few weeks have been like, these are the stories that you should be hearing, this is what we will be looking ahead to. That's in advance of our curriculum night, which is also set for this Thursday, so parents are going to come in. I've heard a little bit of a buzz, we're waiting until the day before, so tomorrow night, for any parents that are listening at home, there's going to be an email coming with blank schedule forms, as well as tricks and tips to follow your child's schedule through the schedule. The advice that I'll say now, again, is take a screenshot of that schedule, just so you're not relying on connecting to the wifi while it's reliable, and you got to go through the signing on, all that, screenshot the schedule so you can go through, but there's going to be more information coming out in an email for last-minute tips and tricks to parents for that Thursday night. Summer reading, the overcoming adversity was, was dynamite, we were fortunate enough to have Jared Krzyszowski, the author of Hey Kid, which was a book that was read by many, but not, not all students, and probably the biggest compliment that I can pay him is after his presentation, he came in and he met with the seventh and ninth grade, and then the 10th through 12th grade, there was a buzz, and kids were coming down here trying to find copies of his book, so if that's not high praise, I don't, I don't know what is. And finally, last but certainly not least, is the academics of, of what's going on here. And we started the year off by talking about our three big rocks that we're going to be focusing on and working with and supporting staff. One of them to mirror the district goal is social emotional learning, again, the mindset that it's not teaching or SEL, but really kind of supporting and weaving those through together, as well as instruction and assessment. Emails have gone out to staff in an effort to support, we're offering some sample goals, by no means are we dictating what the teachers choose as their, you know, SMART goals, but at the same time, we're making a push towards SEL and towards assessment in particular, and they've given some goals, Mr. Taylor and I are already meeting with teachers, we've been in classrooms, they've been seeking Mr. Taylor out, they want to, hey, we've got this great idea, we want to try, you know, try that. One teacher came back into the building today because she forgot a bag at home, and I was getting some work done on my desk, and she, she came in, she's like, I really want to talk about some new assessment strategies. So there's, there's a buzz, and there's some excitement, and it's contagious amongst the staff, but I'm afraid I'm approaching my five minutes, so I will, you know, stop at this point and just see if there are any questions on anything that, that we covered, anything I can answer.
I'm impressed with the smoothness that you've stepped in and rolled things out this year. You're unimpressed.
Thank you, it's part of a good team, so thank you.
A lot of good stuff going on.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm going to make up for the time that Kate took up, so.
We'll go quick.
Good evening. So for special education, I, I would say that it's, it's not an opening that we had, it was a continuation. Our ESY program, our extended school year program, was, again, off, off to a phenomenal beginning and completion. This summer, Ms. Tellis runs a phenomenal program, her staff are outstanding, they're caring, they're compassionate, they're, they're well-trained, and they just really look at that whole child and what their needs are during that five weeks in the summer. We had 87 students take part in that program, they were able to work on their summer reading lessons, they were able to work on their, their reading, writing, and math skills, to continue along with those foundations so that they could keep it going into the school year. We also were able to piggyback some of our kids with the accelerated program also, and maybe get a week or so in there with them, so I, I think that was great, it helped a lot of our kids kind of stay on point in the town. I also, I also want to say that we, we've had some hiring, again, we're back with our social work intern program, looking at those wraparound services, each building will have one social work intern in it, as well as the school adjustment counselors that they've hired this year. We're continuing with our wraparound services, we're looking at some other options to help support kids with wraparounds as well, and I, and I just, I know that we also have had, we had a new school psychologist here at the high school, she's off, off and running and, and, and doing a very nice job here. Each building will have one social work intern in it, as well as the school adjustment counselors that they've hired this year. We're continuing with our wraparound services. We're looking at some other options to help support kids with wraparounds as well. And I just, I know that we also have had, we had a new school psychologist here at the high school. She's off and running and doing a very nice job here. We have six new ISAs in the district that we've hired, and we're just kind of still plugging. We've got fully staffed. We're very lucky that we've fully staffed at this point. Excellent. Any questions, anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick, Jay. Thank you, everybody.
Principals, we appreciate your time and thank you for taking your time out to speak with us.
Thank you.
John.
Guys, my report's up now, I'll tell you later about it. There's three pages in your package. One is titled East Bridgewater Public Schools Operating Budget. This is the summary. It's very early in the school year, so it's really not a heck of a lot to talk about, but I could, as a comparison to last year, the non-salary budget has an available balance of $1.6 million. Last year at this time, we had an available balance of $1.4 million. So again, it's pretty consistent to last year's salary. Similar consistency, we have an available balance of $16.7 million. Last year, we had an available balance of $16.01 million. You can see on the non-salary side, we have, we've only expensed or spent $333,000 so far, but we have encumbrances or expectations of annual expenses of $1.3 million. So I think, you know, it's, again, it's early in the year, but I think we're in really good shape. We haven't had any surprises, no additional out-of-district tuitions that have come in, so I think we're looking good for the start of the year. How we ended last year is at the bottom of that page. Non-salary, on the non-salary side, we had a budget of $3.324 million. We expensed $3.227 million, leaving available balance of $96,000. On the salary side, we had an available balance of $91,000. So we had a, under, we were under budget by $187,976 last year. And I think if you remember, a couple times during the year, we talked about one of our out-of-district tuitions moving out, saving us about $200,000. So that's pretty much the reason for the under-budget there. Any questions on that? Revolving fund balances. Things, if you compare where we are this year to last year at this time, we are fairly consistent. I'll just point out a few differences. School choice at, as of today, or yesterday, we were at $848,000. Last year at this time, we were at, we were at $701,000. Preschool, you see a negative balance there, $66,000. That will not be there once we make some adjustments to expenses. We have so many new, additional staff members, ISAs. It takes me a while to get things straight, get people in the right grant accounts, get people in the right operational accounts, mainly because going crazy with the year-end report. But once the year-end report is done, I sit down with Barbara, we go, we review all the staff, review all the grants, and reallocate expenses and reallocate staff members to the correct departments. School building rental, that's up to $175,000. You can see last year, that was at $129,000. That's a result of, over the summer, we were just booming with Dan Studios and, I think we were one of the only ones renting. So that's why you see an increase in that. Before and after care was down compared to last year, but that will start continuing to grow due to the decrease in staff that we have this year compared to last year. Any questions on?
I have a question, not necessarily specific to this, but just a general question. With the school bucks, do you ever go through and do an audit of funds that remain for students who have graduated and there's still balance on accounts? Have you, only because I know that I think I have a balance that was never used?
Is that mainly in the food?
Yeah. Did Deb Vaughn go through that? Okay.
What you need to do is contact Deb Vaughn, request your refund. I process them on a regular basis. Parents will say, oh, boy, I have a little bit of money left in my child's fund. She sends me the paperwork, it's processed, and we get them like that.
Or it can just be donated?
I'm not sure. You have to speak to them.
Okay.
You could even transfer it over to your other child.
I'm not looking for the money, I just, it's just sitting there.
And you donate, she does donate.
Okay, no, that's good to know. Okay.
When I had asked my graduating child, his, what was on his, then went to the two that are still in school, so that might have.
My other one doesn't use it either, so, but thank you.
And then you can.
Yeah.
Give it to Gina.
I'll give it to Gina.
Gina, she's got two left.
We have had people donate in the past.
Yeah.
I think some, yeah. The next worksheet is something I've updated. I don't think I've updated it in a while, the group here. This just shows our grants from last year compared to this year. The areas that are shaded are new. Were new last year and won't be occurring this year. And then on the flip side, you'll see some new grants this year that we didn't have last year. So it's, it has definitely been a challenge for me and Joanne and the staff, trying to keep up and make sure things are allocated appropriately and expensed appropriately, because we rarely go through a very thorough audit, which will be coming up in January, February. So I'll be busy those months. If you.
He wants a new contract. Here it comes.
Is this inspired in December?
Good job, Mr. Shea.
Thank you.
You spend a lot of hours doing this.
You want to sit over here? Gina sits to the middle so that she's like, well, if one of them goes, I go. Keep going, the two of them, we can.
So I won't go through every line item, but if you have any questions on this today or in the future, I'm happy to sit down with you.
So the ESSR two is completely spent now, and now we're starting to work on three?
It is not spent. That is what we are spending this year, so it will be spent. I mean, it's been budgeted, but I can't request the funds until we spend them. So we will be spending that money this year.
Okay.
And the one below, the summer school expansion and engagement, that's already been spent. That's the one we use for the accelerated program and the Step Up program over the summer.
We also met with the interim town administrator, John and I, and there was some funds still left in the CARES Act. They were helping with our vaccination ban, and we're also, the new monies from the Plymouth County, the ARPO funds that will be in, most of that is for infrastructure or working on your buildings throughout the town. And a couple, we had brought a few things to the attention of the town administration. We're having a department head meeting, I think, in a week from now, John?
Today? Thursday.
Thursday. And so we'll be able to see where we are in line for those. Some things that we have been, have been put on the, has been put on the plate the last couple of years and had to be pushed off for whatever reason. And we have a good relationship with DPW and the fire and the police, so I think everybody will be able to continue to talk and get some of these things done.
Yeah, there's another $4.3 million.
John, I saw Title I went up, which I'm surprised at. Did the funding rate go up, or did our eligibility percentage?
I believe our eligibility, our low-income percentage went up.
Okay. Which is surprising, since it was free lunch, I'm surprised that many people, I mean, a lot of them are direct certified now anyway, but, I mean. Did we get as many applications this year?
Uh, yeah.
We're pushing on it.
Really?
Getting a lot more.
Okay.
Even though it's free for everybody this year, we're still, we're still asking for them, because it gives us the data.
Thank you.
John, I don't know how other districts are with grants, but I know you and Gina work really hard to, you know, look for grants that we would qualify for, and obviously, that makes a big difference, and it takes a lot of work to look for and apply for grants. So I think that's pretty impressive, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a plug for you, John. No, but it was a sincere thing.
Mr. Shea does an excellent job.
Yes, he does.
Anything else, John?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Well done, as always.
Thank you.
Um, Miss Higgins?
So I just want to talk a little about CPAC, and this eventually, I guess, could be under superintendent's corner, but the secretary of CPAC is Missy Schrader, Lucy's mom. And they're in somewhat of a building year this year, and they're looking for parents to become involved, and they're looking for board members. And I know a letter was sent out, but Missy was hoping that we could give some additional attention here for anyone listening at home. So for anyone who doesn't know what CPAC is, it is, let me find it in here. Yeah, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for East Bridgewater. And it's for parents who have children, or child or children, on an IEP, an Individual Education Plan, 504 Plan, or any other special educational needs. And they meet mostly once a month. All of the dates and upcoming meetings are on the East Bridgewater website, ebsp.net. And they're looking, like I said, for involvement of parents, parents who want to be on the committee in an advisory role or an appointed committee member. So they're just looking to hopefully bring more parents in and support the students and talk about how you can, they can work together as a committee and promote an environment where the, you know, children on these special educational plans or have special needs can be in partnership with schools and teachers and just move forward supporting the kids. So I know Missy's available to answer any questions, and I know Jay is, so.
I know that Jay and Missy bet solo. No one else came, so, yeah.
That's where they are, they're solo right now, and they're hoping to, you know, kind of revive, go back to what it used to be in past years. The next meeting is October 14th. The only thing I don't know is where the meeting is. It's October 14th at 12:15, and it looks like all the meetings are at 12:15.
It's usually in Jay's conference room.
In Jay's conference room, okay.
I think they were in his office last time, because it was just the two of them.
Okay. So if anyone wants to join Jay and Missy at the next meeting, it's October 14th at 12:15.
Is that a Thursday? I'm guessing, only because I know the 12th is a birthday in my family. I think that's a Tuesday.
Okay. And then from there, it goes on, it is once a month, right around the.
It's a Thursday.
Yeah, it looks like it's a Thursday every month, so.
Thank you. Public comment? Seeing none. I take a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes, school committee minutes, excuse me, school committee minutes of August 24th, 2021, and September 7th, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve Accounts Payable Warrant 13SV dated 9/22/2021.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion to approve Paywall Warrant 12PS dated 9/15/2021.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen? Seconded by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Dr. Williams has reviewed the home education plans for the attached list of students for the 2021-2022 school year. Superintendent Legault recommends approval of the home education plans. Take a motion to approve the enclosed home education plans.
So moved.
Moved by Ellen?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent, any last comments before we wrap?
No, I think it's been a good year. We, you know, we have work to do, we're going to continue to work, and anybody, again, if you have questions for anything in particular, start with your building principal and then come up to central office.
Thank you.
You know, start at the building level, please.
As a reminder, we have one public meeting next month, which is.
October 12th.
I think it's the, yeah, October 12th, and then on the 26th, we're meeting for superintendent's evaluation training. It'll be the same time as we, actually, I think we could probably do 6 o'clock for that second one. I'll contact Dorothy and double-check. Can you all do 6 o'clock? Scott?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll see if we can do 6 o'clock for that second training, the superintendent's evaluation training. But we have one public meeting on the 12th next month. Take a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Amanda?
Second.
Seconded by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.